Um, are there any corrections, comments, questions?
I have one question. I, I think that, um, our representative for Polster was here. Polster does seem absent, but Jeff Bartley told me he would be here and, um, Charlie thinks maybe he came in late.
Gotta check the tape, I guess.
Yep.
I, I, he told me he was coming, so.
We'll, we'll verify.
Any other comments, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will abstain.
And any abstentions, raise your hands, so.
I'm not abstaining even though I wasn't here.
Okay, you don't have to. It's a matter of conscience.
I abstain.
Next item is to warrant a public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty UPWP and budget.
So I will, uh, talk to this, uh, briefly. Uh, so you have a memo in your packet that gives you a little, little background on the, uh, process and also what the UPWP committee, uh, and executive committee are recommending be considered by the board. Um, you'll see, we're looking at one point seven, seven-two million dollars of new funding. For those of you on the UPWP committee, that's significantly higher than the amount we normally talk about because it includes the GMT funding. So it's kind of a whole additional chunk of funds there. And then on the second page of the memo, you'll see kind of a summary of the overall program. So that includes all the staff time and non-transportation funded programs, uh, grant agreements that we already have in place. Uh, a little bit over five point four million. You see the UPWP and executive committee recommended that you warrant a public hearing for the draft UPWP and budget for your March, or May fifteenth meeting at six P M. Uh, that is the action requested in front of you. Following the memo is a table that, uh, gives you the detail on the new projects. Following that one point seven seven, and I think you had in your, uh, probably as a separate attachment sent to you, full UPWP and budget. So happy to take any questions on those or? Thank you to the UPWP committee for all your work over the last two, three months.
Are there any questions?
To warrant a public hearing.
Second.
So we'll go Andy with the second, Barbara with the motion to warrant the public hearing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, Chris Dubin will present on our road erosion inventory.
All right. Uh, thanks, Chris. Um, again, my name is Chris Dubin. I'm a transportation planner here, Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. And today I'll be giving a brief update on, uh, Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission's, uh, role in assisting municipalities in meeting, uh, the goals of the municipal roads general permit and the subsequent road erosion inventory that's needed to complete this. Through the phase one, uh, Lake Champlain TMDL, it was identified that, sorry for the poor choice of colors, but, uh, developed lands, including paved roads and unpaved roads, total to about twenty percent of the total. And that's really where, uh, through Act sixty-four additionally, uh, the municipal road, the impetus for the municipal roads general permit, uh, came from. The, uh, permit was issued in twenty eighteen and it's looking to set deadlines for bringing all hydrologically connected roadway segments up to compliance. Uh, we're gonna get into what that definition actually means shortly. But, uh, from an operational perspective, the, uh, the way this, this permit will work is to inventory, uh, segments of roadway, um, sort of figure out what's, what's happening with them, what erosion issues and standards out of, what compliance issues they may have, prioritize those needs and implement solutions on those roads.
And then those solutions become what, part of our UPWP or?
Uh, to some extent, yes. We have used, uh, water quality planning funds to further plan for what upgrades would need to be done if it's a more detailed level of work. But, uh, ultimately, uh, implementation is gonna come from, uh, either capital funds at a town level or grant programs and other funding sources.
So we're like, we're the umbrella and the reason that we're doing this is because it's a way we integrate with our constituent municipalities?
Yep, we're assisting them effectively in them reaching the goals of this permit. Uh, there's, uh, a lot of inventory work that we've been doing and we wanna take the next steps and, and help them kind of sift through and prioritize that data. But we'll get into some of the solutions that we've built.
And the other thing that I'm curious about, just because I'm me, is, um, is this more important to the non-core communities like out in rural areas? Or is this more important to the core communities or no difference between the two?
Every town is under the permit. So, I mean, I think the variety, issues that they have may be a little bit different, but they're all subject to the requirements and the.
I was thinking about it more along the lines of how we're serving our member communities.
Yep.
Because I know the core communities have fairly sophisticated public work staffs. And are, is this an instance where we are providing more technical assistance to the rural communities versus the core, or is everybody in the same boat?
Even Steven.
Although I will say, from Bolton's standpoint, we've been very appreciative of the help we've gotten from the RPC because we don't have the staff, as you've said.
I think it's also probably important as you look at this, if you look at our budget on a couple of pages prior, we're almost a million dollars in water quality now. And I don't know the numbers offhand, but I know at least within the UPWP itself and total budget, I would bet three years ago it was a fraction of that. So, you know, we as a, as a body have been moving, and I expect that to go up as the.
This is an extension of the stormwater quality issue and all that kind of stuff. So we just keep going deeper and deeper and deeper.
Getting back to this concept of, of hydrologic connectivity, it's a term or definition that was coined by, uh, DEC, the, the people that sort of created this permit. They basically said that, uh, waterways of the state are a determining factor. The distance to waterways of the state are a determining factor. And, uh, set a threshold of one hundred feet, uh, distance to a waterway of the state would, or, or less than that, would be a hydrologically connected roadway. In addition, outlets, uh, from catch basins on curbed roadways are also covered under this permit and their proximity distance threshold, if you will, are set at a bit larger of a distance of five hundred feet. To kind of help towns and, um, well, to help municipalities address this issue in terms of inventorying this work, they threw, uh, a GIS exercise, basically split all of the roadways into hundred meter segments. So we'll get a little bit into more of the standards and the inventory itself, but all of these segments are effectively about a hundred meters in length.
You said the hundred meters, the hundred foot proximity to the roadway? And that's hundred feet on a linear plane or vertically? Because there are a lot of roadways traveling the state as much as I have that are sheer, you know? So it can be two hundred feet, you know, before you get down there, but on a plane, it's only fifty feet, you know?
This was strictly a two-dimensional exercise, so it's, it's, yep, it was flat plane analysis that, that, again, the. Yep, yep. It's a good point.
But if you think about it, if you're two hundred feet higher than the water, but fifty feet away, probably anything going off that road is, is ending up in that stream.
And, and the state recognized that this was by no means a perfect exercise. And, uh, municipalities have, uh, the power to kind of say which segments may not actually be hydrologically connected or, you know, add or delete as, as they feel necessary.
We're deciding to mix English and metric measurements with this.
I was wondering that.
We'll say not us.
Yes, not us.
And about half of the roads generally across the state were determined to be, uh, connected. Right. So just so you get a sense, it's not, not all the roads, about half.
More, I thought it'd be more.
About half, yeah. And it's approximately, it's a little less, but still pretty close to fifty percent in Chittenden County as well. Uh, we're gonna take a quick look at two different timelines, sort of the near-term timeline of the municipal roads permit and the longer term, the full timeline. These two slides were, were stolen from DEC's presentation, so. One key point is, is the issuance of the municipal roads general permit, which happened in twenty eighteen. We backtrack from that a little bit with the draft permit in which the RPC and many other state agencies were involved in providing comments for, et cetera. We are obviously just past this date right here, the annual MRGP compliance updates. That was a one-page form with, which, in which your municipalities hopefully just filled out. And it basically asked, um, did you complete your inventory yet? If so, who did it? Um, if not, when do you intend to do it? In future years, we will be asked or required to report on the actual data that we collected, but, um, we're not necessarily there yet. Looking forward, yep, sure.
Where, you, we've got a minimum of fifteen percent of non-compliance segments upgraded to meet the standards. This is gonna take multiple years and as you knock stuff off, fifteen percent becomes more and more roadway.
Right.
So is that, is that how it's intended to be, or is that just kind of a language malfunction?
It, well, in the, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's fifteen.
From the initial.
Right.
Set.
Oh, so even though you've.
So you keep dropping it down.
Alright, so even though you've cured some, if you will, that counts as.
Right. And we'll get into a graph that.
Cumulative. Yes.
Oh, that's a word. Right. We have a, a graph that may help sort of get at that in a little bit. A couple intermediate deadlines, uh, in the longer term. Well, I guess I'll start with the very end, by December thirty-first, twenty thirty-six, this twenty-year timeline, all roadways that are not in compliance or not meeting MRGP standards will need to be brought up to standards. Some other deadlines are looking at very high priority roads. That's a definition of roadways that do not meet standards, they're non-compliant, and they're over ten percent in slope. Uh, DEC has recognized them as, uh, very, uh, high priority, if you will. And there are intermediate deadlines for, for those as well. In addition, we have, uh, a separate intermediate, uh, deadline for class four roads as well. Some of the standards that, uh, are sort of embedded in the inventory process are crowning of the roadway, uh, ditch dimensions and type. We can have stone line ditching, uh, grass line ditches with check dams, grass ditches. And those are dependent on things like slope of the road. Uh, outlet stabilization is another, uh, standard within this permit, uh, for curbed roadways, obviously. And, uh, another one is, uh, turnouts or, uh, locations in which water is directed off of the road. And, uh, the requirement is to make sure that those areas are stabilized and filtered with things like rock swales and vegetation. As we talked about briefly, there's different types of roadways in, as defined in this permit, things like class four roads and curb and catch basin roads. Some of these specific standards within the permit don't necessarily apply to all roadway types. So there's some differences there. For example, on a paved roadway, when we will go out and inventory these roads, we're not actually evaluating whether or not there's a crown on the roadway, at least relative to this specific permit. And in class four roadways, for example, we're really not inventorying much at all. We're simply looking if there is severe or gully erosion, which in this permit is defined as erosion of, uh, one foot in depth or greater. This is a, a screenshot of the road erosion inventory form that DEC has created. As you can see, again, uh, not applicable for paved. This is, again, how they help people, whether it be, uh, municipal staff, RPC folk, anyone who may be doing this inventory, uh, work through these questions. What we did is, uh, converted this form effectively into a GIS database. Uh, we use that for collection, data collection, data management, um, quality control, mapping, analysis and reporting. We just have sort of one, uh, centralized database that can kind of do all that instead of relying on, on paper forms. So starting in the summer of twenty sixteen, we began using our team of interns to actually go out and do these inventories. Uh, over two summers, we've completed all Chittenden County municipalities that needed to apply for this permit. And, uh, with that, we decided to take this data and roll it up into, uh, what is called a dashboard, but it's a web-based, uh, application that allows anyone really to go to that URL and begin to explore the results of this road erosion inventory. We're gonna come back to this at the end and it's, uh, kind of go through a, a tutorial of what the tool is, uh, intended to, to be used for. As I briefly spoke about earlier, outlets are a, a large, uh, part of this permit, especially in Chittenden County. About thirty percent of the roadways that are, uh, covered under this permit are curbed, uh, that ultimately drain to an outlet. This is, uh, an area in the new north end of Burlington and what we see here is a series of points, colored points that represent outlet locations and the colored line segments that, um, have now been correctly mapped and sort of fixed in our database to be sort of, uh, connected to that specific outlet. This is really critical for, uh, everything from prioritization of projects to reporting. Because as you can see, uh, for example, in this pink, uh, group of segments and respective outlet, some outlets may serve a large, much larger, uh, impervious surface area than others.
But some of those that are small are incredibly steep. So there's, there's a tremendous volume of water that are coming off of them, so.
Right. And, and those very well, uh, for example, in this, this situation with our pink outlet, that one could be perfectly fine and not so, show any signs of erosion. So we're still going out to inspect and inventory these outlets themselves, but we really need to know how many segments are, are draining to them. Uh, this is a manual GIS project. I've been working with many, uh, MS four communities already. Uh, these totals are, uh, segment totals, uh, for curbed roadways and overall segment totals in your town. The difference would be things like gravel roads, paved roads without curbs. But what you can see here is, uh, the additions and subtractions to incorrectly identified hydrologically connected segments. So, for example, in Burlington, we needed to add a hundred and thirty-eight segments that initially DEC did not tell us were connected and we needed to remove a hundred and forty-seven. So the net change was not very much, but we, we severely changed the actual segments that, that are part of this, uh, database for, for Burlington. And conversely, in a town like Essex, we, we do in fact see quite a drop in the number of segments that are, are truly eligible under, recovered under this permit.
You've thrown all these numbers at us, it's fine for looking at it, but I assume, and I've assumed this, but I hate to assume, I'd rather ask the question, that none of this information involves the state roadway system. This is just the local roadway.
That's correct. Yep. Yep, this is the municipal roads general permit, so they filtered out all state routes before they gave us the original data set.
Then we're also excluding IBM, uh, any, any, I mean.
Has nothing to do with private property.
Private roads, which, you know, sometimes there's more.
And it doesn't mean that they aren't required to do stuff, so they're under separate permits. So right, the, when the state was addressing the TMDL, the municipal roads general permit was the thing for municipal roads. There's a TS four, TS three, TS four.
TS four.
Permit for the state highways. And then there's, uh, just stormwater and three acre permits for private property owners. And then, of course, and then we also have the MS four permits in our urban towns. So there's a lot of other permits going on besides this one. This is just the town road permit.
All your condo associations and stuff that have private roads are not built into this here?
Right, they're probably under that three acre permit.
Just make sure I'm understanding this correctly, but what that's saying is that there's seven hundred and eighty-three, one thousand meter.
Hundred meter.
I mean, yes, I mean, hundred meter.
Yep.
Sections.
Of curbed roadways. That was what the state gave us initially.
Right.
Um, we ended up with, um, seven hundred and seventy-four, once we went through this exercise. We pretty much had to evaluate every single one of them from scratch. It was a lengthy process. John, getting back to your earlier point of, uh, this fifteen percent rule as it changes, uh, looking into, uh, how Chittenden County municipalities have been implementing projects and tracking that work, for the ten thousand plus segments across all of Chittenden County, about seventeen hundred and forty-seven, one thousand seven hundred and forty-seven of them are non-compliant. That number of two hundred sixty-two is fifteen percent of that total. So that, this is the, this is part of this near-term compliance targets that we're talking about. And we'll get into a li, a little bit later, as I'll explain, we'll, you know, our, our team internally will constantly be going out and meeting with municipalities to update the inventory. But we have achieved upgrades of one hundred and forty-seven segments over the last year. Of those, forty-two have been in the hot, very high priority category. So that one hundred thirty-eight is the total of all very high priority segments that need to be upgraded by the dates shown here.
Is that pretty much our split of about fifteen percent? The one is a subset of the other, is that, that's pretty much our?
That just, that's just how it happened, right? So you're asking like, of all the things that we need to upgrade, how many fall into the very high priority category? Well, the two sixty-two is actually only fifteen percent of that entire total, whereas the one thirty-eight is all of them. Should've reiterated that.
Oh, alright, so I assume by looking at this that the one thirty-eight was a subset of the two sixty-two. That's not the case.
No, it's not the case.
Yeah, so I mean, basically, uh, in the first couple of years, we've gotten more than fifty percent towards that fifteen percent. Sorry, I shouldn't do that, but fifty percent of the fifteen percent. And, you know, we're a quarter of the way to meeting the, uh, very high priority segment improvements. I say we, the municipalities are doing this work, right?
Careful with this graph as you go around with it because that's, that's certainly not clear. I knew, I knew the two sixty-two was only fifteen percent of the total. But then in looking at the same graph, I would assume one thirty-eight is also fifteen percent.
Right.
Total, and that's clearly not what it states, so just, it's a little, it's not, it's not intuitive.
We, we struggled a lot with the presentation of this data and, and we.
Chris was trying to see how few words you could have on him, so.
The more words, the better, I think.
The more words, the better. Noted. More words. Got it.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, these two sort of lines and trajectories are really meant to be looked at independently from one another, I guess I'd say. So getting into implementation, um, we have been over the last year working through various grant programs, both, uh, through V-Trans and DEC to, uh, get money to towns to implement projects. Uh, this was, uh, one of the earliest projects we did in, in Westford on Woods Hollow Road. And the before and after, uh, clearly shows a substantial change to the roadway. Uh, this roadway, uh, based on the standards in the MRGP should require a rock line ditch because of its slope is, it's greater than some threshold. And, uh, we got grant money to re-establish this ditch and rock line it. There were some other aspects of this project, like re-crowning the roadway, removing the greater berm and adding some cross culverts in, uh, as well.
I'm curious, looking at the photo there, have you got any feedback from like neighbors and stuff that you uglified their road and they're, they're teed off, or is this, I mean, I, I think everybody would agree with what you're doing here, don't get me wrong, but I'm just curious what the public feedback when their daily commute changes.
Right. Uh, the only thing we've heard about was, was Bolton, um, just because, uh, we've been working with a lot, them with a, them a lot lately and, but I, I don't know, I, I don't, sometimes it doesn't make it, uh, make it back to me personally. But I, I don't know if anyone else has heard anything from their town specifically.
Well, I mean, just even when we do ordinary, we have, you know, uh, just regular road work when you have to clean out a ditch or something or take down a tree, you can only hear it. I mean, people do jump all over the, the road crew and the select board for doing that. People don't want their, they like that, that canopy road look, you know, even though it's not really the best thing in the world.
Uh, this is an example of, uh, uh, an outlet location in the new slash old north end of Burlington draining down to the, the wetlands by one twenty-seven. Uh, the pipe basically disconnected, uh, from itself and, and eroded away. Pretty substantial area of volume. Yeah, it's, that's, that would be deemed very high priority. And this last location is, is a conveyance area, um, in which, down in this ravine, there's, there's a stream right there. So re-establishing this rock swell, uh, was pretty critical, um, for this area. So all these projects we, we got grant money for and, and assisted municipalities in, um, cutting down their costs effectively. Uh, so this is a summary of, of really what, what money, grant, grant money is coming into Chittenden County specifically. Um, as you can see, certain grant programs didn't exist in certain years. And, you know, it, they, they do vary across, across programs. Um, these last two specifically are ones that I've been working with a lot more. And they really try to harp on this concept of, you know, eligibility is defined as non-compliant roadways that are hydrologically connected and through this process, the roadway will be upgraded to meet MRGP standards. So, uh, we're gonna give a real quick tutorial here, um, on this tool, but ultimately, our goal is to continue to update our database as towns are making progress for this and continue to assist municipalities in any sort of grant administrative work. So this is the actual tool. Uh, along the bottom here, uh, I apologize for the lack of labels. These are the individual town segment totals. Uh, in this pie chart, we have the actual overall segment compliance countywide and the surface type countywide, as well as a mileage tracker. Uh, the, the nice thing about this tool is that you can begin to filter data and these graphs and charts will update dynamically. So if we were to zoom in and take a look at what's happening in Westford, um, which is probably more similar to the rest of Vermont than some other towns, um, we can begin to look at what, what is their homework assignment, right? So if we look at only their non-compliant roadways, we're looking at a one hundred and seventy-three segments, which totaled to about a little less than fifteen miles. And eight of those specific segments are deemed very high priority. Um, this database, uh, is spatially accurate, but also contains the actual discrete data that we collected in the field. Uh, looks like this was inventoried on July twenty-fourth. And these are the individual assessment of, uh, standards within, um, this individual segment. What we'll also do is make sure that we're, uh, updating this with changes. So if we actually look right around here, um, we will reassess this. Work done. This was that grants and aid, this grant project that I showed you the pictures of before and after. And now the segment is green, it fully meets. So this is sort of the live current status of, of roadways as it pertains to municipal roads permit. So we encourage you to, to use this tool, play around with it, um, comments, give me comments and, you know, questions if you have them and.
Is there a, a readily identifiable link?
Yep.
From the RPC's main page to get there?
I think there is. If not, we can make sure that we publicize that. We have that, I think, in here somewhere, but, um, we'll get that up if, if it's not readily available.
So you really need to train those interns, huh?
Yeah, they, they pick it up pretty quick. They're, they're pretty smart, so.
It's only as good as their observation.
It's actually pretty good work for an intern to do.
It is.
Substantial and, you know, you can walk away from that at the end of the summer, I'd reuse it and, you know, actually.
Well, I'm talking about, you know, partially meets, fully meets, type of crown.
A bit of training that goes.
Do training them all together so they're using the same.
Well, we start, we start with this, right? And within probably less than two weeks, they have all of these standards, uh, memorized. So Jeff, that's a good point. You say partially meets. Well, that's a very clear definition of, for example, roadway. of, for example, roadway crown must be between fifty and eighty-nine percent of the roadway is crowned properly. And they'll have a supplemental documentation workbook that says exactly what that crown definitely is.
Tape measures and strings and all that kind of stuff.
They're using tools on their phone to measure slope, you know.
Any other questions?
Well, this isn't a question, but I think one of the things that's coming up is the availability of enough stone to, uh, do all this. And, you know, ten years down the road, all these ditches are gonna need to be cleaned out, so, how are we gonna?
Harvest the stone.
How are we gonna reclaim that stone? What are the tools that we're gonna need? Um, and, I mean, there's a shortage of that stone at this point.
I think that the, the MRGP team at, at DEC has been sort of punting on the maintenance issue, at least now. And their focus is, how do we get all, we're, Chittenden County is so far ahead of the game in terms of getting the inventory done, the initial sort of look, look in on, on the status of our roads, so, they're, they're still at the first step in this process.
Kind of has the feel of replacing nineteen twenty-eight bridges.
Yeah, the way I heard about the stone thing was from a, a neighboring RPC who was hearing from their towns that Chittenden County was taking all the stone. First come, first served, another reason, just another reason to have Chittenden County envy.
Anything else? Alright, thank you very much, Chris, appreciate it.
State would be so much better off if we just send them our money and not take care of ourselves.
Next item, charge to Board Development Committee to develop slate of officers for fiscal year twenty.
It says Chair Action.
I charge the Development Committee with coming up with a slate of candidates.
And the Development Committee is myself, Jeff and Catherine?
Yes.
And I, and I understand this is the last year we can torture you, Mr. Chair.
That's right. Um, so, if anybody's interested in serving on the Executive Committee, being in any of the, of the officer roles, let us know, let Charlie know, let me know, um, and we'll be meeting, our committee will be meeting.
Yeah, everybody needs to understand that, um, we try to balance the Executive Committee membership with certain members from smaller communities, and then certain members from the core communities. And then we have rules about how long people can serve in, uh, the positions. And we have a past chair position, so that when we boot the Chair of the Commission, that person becomes automatic past chair, and then Montroll will go out and drink, uh, adult beverages. Because he's been chat past chair for a long time and head of this committee.
And, um, and the, the way this is structured in the bylaws is that, um, the Board Development Committee has to report back to the full board by the, uh.
May meeting, right?
By the May meeting, so that you have the slate of officers a month in advance of the annual meeting in June, so.
That's where we vote.
It's a little formal, uh, process, uh, piece here, so.
Alright, well, you're so charged, and, uh, the Chair has acted. Um, next item, Winuski Master Plan Approval Confirmation of Planning Process and Determination of Energy Compliance.
Emily, you will speak to the board?
Sure, I will, and I'll actually speak to both the Winuski and the Colchester plan, um, at the same time during my review, because what I have to say is substantially similar, both of them. Both of them are new plans, re-adoptions, that are, um, include new content and will give eight years before expiration in both cases. Um, they're both great plans, enjoyable to read, and we've reviewed them at the staff level, um, in both cases throughout the process of a nice iterative process. In both cases, um, Regina in our office actually did the writing for the Winuski plan. And we have had them before the PAC a few times. The PAC and staff have reviewed them, found that they are meeting the statutory requirements for planning. Uh, they're compatible both with the plans of the surrounding municipalities and with our regional plan. And they are meeting the requirements for energy planning, uh, that the state of Vermont has put out. That's an optional process, but, uh, both of them have chosen to, to pursue it. And so, that'll give their plans substantial deference before the Public Utilities Commission. Much more detail included in your PAC if you're interested in the process or comments for either one of them. But in both cases, uh, both the Planning Advisory Committee and staff are recommending that the plans be approved, the confirmation, the planning process be confirmed, and that they have an affirmative determination of energy compliance.
Are there any questions with respect to either the Winuski or Colchester town plan and the process that led to them? If not, there's a recommended motion with respect to each of them. We can do them, I guess, combined or separately, but if someone wants to do it combined, I'm not gonna be adverse to that.
I'm going to approve them both as presented in the, uh, package.
Second.
The answer's the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Do we need to confirm their planning process in a separate thing, or is the approval of the plan confirmed?
It's all part of that same motion.
Okay, just, just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Next item, S ninety-six recommendations.
Okay, um, so, in your PAC, there's a memo giving you a little bit of background, uh, about this bill. S ninety-six, it passed out of the Senate, uh, a couple of weeks ago. It is in front of the House Committee on Natural Resources, Fish and Wildlife currently. Um, they really just started, uh, taking up, uh, testimony, uh, last week, and, uh, asked me to testify last Thursday, uh, in advance of your meeting, for which I apologize, but, um, thought we'd tried to introduce some ideas to them early on, so I did testify. And there, I guess I'll give you a little bit of update about, uh, where I think the status of the bill is and what's kind of happening with this, um, big picture. So, this is, um, this bill is really about two different things. One, it, I believe, is intended to be the bill for additional water quality revenue this year. So, there's kind of one provision that's in there for that. And it's proposing, uh, to shift some of how water quality funds are distributed across the state uh, by going to this clean water service provider model, which is more of a watershed-based. There'd be a clean water service provider for every watershed. So, it's more of a regionalized approach, rather than, right now, everything goes through the DEC office. And I think the DEC office, well, I won't get into that too much, but, um, A and R is the one who kind of proposed that, partly in part to address challenges within, uh, that they have in terms of getting out hundreds of grants a year. So, they're proposing that. Any questions kind of about the status, um? Jeff?
So, it only went through the Senate Program Authorizing Committee. It did not go through the Senate Finance Committee because it doesn't have a revenue component to it.
It went through all those committees, but the Senate Finance did not add any language to it. So, they kind of passed it on, um, and then it got voted on by the, the full Senate. My understanding is that there was some understanding between the Senate and House that the Senate was drafting this delivery system, this regional delivery system, and that the House would work more on the specific of the revenue.
Because, isn't usually true that it goes through a program authorizing committee? They authorize the program, and then it goes through the Money Committee in that chamber, and then they say they modified the program to conform to the amount of money they want earmarked towards it. And it seems like in the Senate, we bypassed that.
No, it went through those committees.
But if the Senate Finance Committee didn't attach any revenue sources to it.
That's correct.
It did, it, it did nothing to modify the Program Authorizing Committee, which then it seems like it's gonna go to the House.
It is at the House.
It's at the House, also, House Authorizing, Program Authorizing Committee. It will then go to House Ways and Means for the revenue side. They will pass a bill, and then they will go to conference without having had the Senate Finance Committee weigh in on the revenue things. Is that what I'm understanding?
That sounds essentially like the process. And my understanding is that there was some, some sort of agreement or understanding between the Senate and House where the Senate was okay deferring to House Ways and Means to develop the revenue.
So, the next question is, how much revenue is this gonna involve?
Yeah, so, um, uh, thanks for bringing that up. If you, if you, uh, were, had a lot of time and you actually read this bill, which I don't expect any of you to have done, uh, but there is, the money provision is basically one, maybe one or two sentences in there that says the legislature's committing to, uh, have fifty to sixty million dollars annually for water quality. That is pretty much what has been happening. Um, and the way I've heard this explained is that, coming into FY twenty, which is the budget we're talking about, um, the, uh, legislature and the administration both understood that the state was going to back off of the amount of capital funding. So, they've been taking some of the bonding authority, uh, revenue of the state, and the, these last two years have significantly increased the amount of capital funding going to water quality projects. In FY twenty, and I think of mutual agreement, they were stepping that back, and the number I've heard is by about eight million. And so, the gap in funding that I think House Ways and Means is trying to plug is around eight million.
And this is only gonna happen in six weeks?
That is the sense I'm getting that they're trying to get to.
Without an early marker from the Senate on where the money's gonna come from or anything, because they rejected the Governor's proposal.
Yeah, the, yeah, so, sorry, for those of you who may be not be following, the Governor proposed, uh, filling that gap with the estate tax.
Part of the estate tax.
Or part of the estate tax, um, and, yeah, that does seem that that was, I don't know how formally, but, or informally, but not, has not been taken up and not going to happen. And so, it is now in, uh, or should be shortly getting to House Ways and Means to figure out how to fill that financial gap.
No question, Jeff, this is unusual.
I'm just trying to get my.
Operating of siege.
Well, my, my, my cynical Jeff, uh, way of looking at this is, we wrapped ourselves around the axle on Act two fifty reform, now it's not going anymore. So, I'm just trying to get a reading on, if we wrap ourselves around the axle, weighing in on this kind of stuff again, are we doing this with the idea that it's gonna sit there for six, eight more months before it gets serious again? Or is this, do we really have to do this and use your valuable time and divert our energy, uh, to something like this to either do a positive thing, or if I'm seeing the way that, that there's a proposal to potentially have the RPC on the hook for enforcement? Um, I just, I wanna make sure that as a Commissioner of this organization, that I understand what's going on, and I, and I, and we're not pursuing a fool's errand, that this is real. And this is a real risk, and it's worth your valuable time to be participating in this, because we think this is really gonna happen.
I will give it a eighty-five to ninety percent chance that this bill is moving forward. Uh, I think the.
But maybe some things that we're concerned about may not be there in this time, this year. And there's a role for us to play in that to protect us from becoming an enforcement stooge, um, for things. I mean, basically, have no ability to affect the policy, but all the liability for seeing it, it's done. That's the concern, I think, that I'm ready to take it with the committee, right?
Discuss, yes.
I was gonna say, I'm very following just for that.
Yeah. I, I agree, I agree. I just wanted to work it out, I.
Courageously passed a bill that shifts liability to the regions without providing funding. That's what the Senate did.
Nicely played, well played, Mr. Show.
South Burlington is out with the. We already have our stormwater utility, we don't need to do that.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood the totality of what this was.
Yeah, I, I think that's pretty much the whole context going on. I mean, yeah, uh, obviously, none of us know what they will actually end up doing. Uh, it does feel like there is, uh, you know, pressure to get this through this, the Natural Resources Committee shortly. And by that, I mean this week or next week. Um, so, to me, this, the timing of our meeting tonight is fortuitous, because I think I have at least one significant question to kind of put on the table and, and ask for feedback. That would be, I think, helpful to the deliberations of that committee before they voted out.
Just my last clarifying question. Um, the revenue source, if it is not a capital item, that could become an item in the big bill, the budget for this year, which could then become something that gets involved in end-of-the-session stuff, like we've seen the last two or three.
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, I mean, my.
This is a fun one.
My little p- political sense is that, is that both, all, all, well, the leadership of the two chambers have committed to getting something done on water quality.
They're getting pressure.
We've, we've, we've made that commitment for multiple years, but we haven't been able to arrive at a consensus.
This time for real.
Charlie, is Vapt and the other RPCs, are they all on the same page, or are you working on this on your own right now?
Um, yeah, so, uh, I had the fun of also being the Chair of the Natural Resources Committee for the RPC statewide. So, um, so for good and bad, um, that, that means, to Jeff's point about my time, that does mean I spend more time, uh, herding cats, um, and seeing to what extent. And I think, um, a, a lot of these, uh, major points, we have come to agreement on. You know, that, that, you know, we, you know, we always try to be a good partner with the state, um, and can help where we can help, um, but we also don't want this to feel like a permit. And, you know, getting back to this enforcement question, which is really, to me, the big sticking point, uh, about how this is structured right now. Any other background questions?
Well, just to be clear, I, I am, um, this is about all the money for the voluntary.
Oh, thanks.
Projects that are in the tactical basin plans or someplace. So, this is not, uh, about regulat- meeting regulatory things, and the majority of what we have to do is on private land. And it means that you have to get landowners to agree to do these projects. And so, it's, it gets a tall task, it's a lot of money that's needed, and, um.
Yeah, actually, let me give a little more context. Thanks for bringing that up. So, this, this restructuring, I, I think was also, uh, uh, the Secretary Moore realizing that particularly in the north and south ends of Lake Champlain, where, and Lake Champlain Basin, which we all know well, is where they've done most of the modeling. But, um, when they looked at what was going to get accomplished via P- permits, so, everything regulatory, the things we just mentioned in the, Chris's presentation, Julie had, the, her first two years, sorry, Secretary Moore, had been testifying that probably ninety percent of meeting our water quality goals was going to get accomplished just by people meeting the permit requirements. I think as she's dug into that a little bit more, she's realized there are at least parts of the Lake Champlain watershed where, um, the comply, like, it's not really possible to get there, uh, just through permit requirement. And really, those are the areas, um, frankly, outside of Chittenden County. The areas further north and south to us where, um, there were very high assumptions about how much farmers were gonna be able to do, um, like in, like that they were gonna be able to reduce eighty-something percent of their pollution, where they're forty percent of the problem. And so, there was kind of an unrealistic demand expectation about what was going to get accomplished through the permit. So, this, I believe, is a shift in strategy to say, we need more to happen in terms of voluntary projects. We need more work to happen more locally with property owners, uh, watershed groups, conservation districts, to get voluntary projects done. But, so this whole structure, this regional structure, is to focus on these voluntary projects, not municipal roads, not stormwater improvements or anything. So, uh, thanks for that part of the context.
And we lost the lottery last week, right? Well, the Clean Energy Project through Lake Champlain isn't gonna happen because Central Main Power won the distribution thing over in Maine. Maine got the transmission corridor of the Canadian power to the Boston market. Um, the Clean Energy Link through Lake Champlain was one that didn't stand a great probability of success. Um, and, you know, there was another one through Granite State, which everybody knows about a year and a half ago failed. And then there was another one that Velco was, uh, talking about going through the Northeast Kingdom and then down into New Hampshire that Vermont would've got a little piece of. But the TDI project had, what, fifty, sixty million dollars a year for cleaning water as part of it?
Five million over, oh, twenty or thirty years.
Five million per year over twenty or thirty years, along with all sorts of other green mail to get it approved. But it didn't stand a chance, uh, against some of the other transmission. But it didn't stand a chance against some of the other transmission corridors that I think all Central Main Power had to do was enhance one that already existed to get the power over. So that decision was only made last week, so now the TDI clean energy thing is off the table, done.
Isn't it under appeal? I thought some of the groups in Maine were.
Well, everything's always under appeal, okay? Until it isn't. So they're not gonna, they're not gonna pay what they have to pay to go through the cable through Lake Champlain. So for those of you that don't know, we had a presentation on that about three years ago, where the guy actually came in with a cross section of the cable.
It's really quite interesting.
Was it three years ago?
Yeah. So that's how all this ties together. That's why we're now, I think, finally getting serious about the funding.
Yeah, right.
Because there's no more lottery out there as a possibility for us.
That would've been very helpful if it happened. So if I can turn your page to the attachment to the memo, which was just a two-pager, which is somewhat, you know, basically written as I testified last week. And I'll give some credit to A and R. Their general counsel presented yesterday and had addressed a lot of these. So, and there's really no, no debate issues on, in terms of the first page. I'm gonna turn to the second page of this. And maintenance responsibility was one big thing. They also made some changes similar to the language that came out of our, our Clean Water Advisory Committee and from our executive committee a couple of weeks ago. So they have some language similar to this now in the latest draft, the A and R proposed back. The, the one big issue is in the middle of the page, an F accountability for pollution reduction goals. Right now, or, I'm sorry, previously, that language had, you see number two struck through there. That strike-through language basically said they could take enforcement action against a clean water service provider. I'm gonna pass out.
And just to explain to people, the default clean water service provider is.
Well, it was the RPCs. By the time it got through the Senate, they took out the predisposition towards RPCs. So it was kind of any, any organization, but mostly the conversation's been about RPCs, conservation districts, and maybe a watershed group might want to be a clean water service provider.
Who would want the liability?
Who would want the liability?
Then there's the council.
I was gonna say, nobody wants that.
The council?
You know, there's the, there's the provider, which are gonna disperse it, but then there's the.
There's a basin council.
Council. I mean, to me, it's just adding a whole level of government, of kind of governance.
Yes.
That is duplicitous.
Is there anybody?
Duplicitous, you mean?
Duplicitous, yeah. It is duplicitous.
Is there anybody on this commission that believes that we should accept the enforcement liability without having a say, without having the oversight and what is done?
I don't even know what I wanted, even if we have implemented.
I know, well, I'm just saying.
I don't think they have a technical, I mean, it means that they're just shifting our.
It would be an extraordinary change to our mission and operation. That's not what we do.
We don't do that kind of implementation.
I mean, and.
Even in our MPO business, we're not implementers.
With our municipalities, too.
Yeah, so I pass out this rule on page because at the bottom of page twelve here, you'll see that A and R was proposing, they struck the language that was there and put in some different language. I'm not sure how much better or not, but I just wanted, in fairness to them, share with you the latest version. So it says, instead of initiate enforcement action, it says, assess penalties established as a term of its grant agreement with the clean water service provider, which shall increase.
I don't even wanna read the rest of the sentence after assessed penalties.
Which shall increase.
Okay, I don't even wanna read the rest of the sentence.
Penalties instead of a statutory penalty. If I'm penalized for a thousand bucks, you can call it Fred, I'm still paying a thousand bucks, so I don't care where it comes from.
Yeah, so they changed the language a little bit, but it still has penalties in there. So I'm just trying to be fair to them, that they did. They did update.
You get to penalize the state when they don't do what they're supposed to?
Yeah.
Oh, we can't do that, can we?
Just like we can penalize the feds.
So I would, I'd love to ask for as strong a vote as you want, then, the feelings of the, of the commission with regard to this provision, especially because I'd like to get back in front of them and tell them that either we could live with this or we can't live with this.
I would, I would move, that is, the sense of the commissioners on this board that the RPC is not in a position technically or financially to be assessed penalties of any kind for noncompliance by another party.
Second.
Second.
Andy seconded. Any further discussion?
Sorry, Amy.
I would say that it's not just the financial burden of it, it's just the whole.
Operational.
Operation of it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I mean, dollars are never gonna talk, but.
You said technically or feasibly.
I said technically, I said technically is what I used, I did put technically in it. And, and it's actually not consistent with our mission.
Potentially process of.
So.
They'll just.
I can, I don't mind if the secondor of the motion would say, and say, and that it's inconsistent with the RPC's stated mission.
Is that okay with you?
Friendly?
I think colloquial, Charlie could use the term nonstarter in his discussions.
I've been using poison pill, but.
Nonstarter works.
That, that's the most diplomatic I've seen, I've seen Ziccone be in about ten years.
Any further discussion, questions? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous vote noted.
Thank you.
I would not, because I'm abstaining.
Yes, Amy abstained?
I have to abstain.
Okay. Everyone who could vote, voted affirmatively.
It was an RPC vote.
I could vote.
You're not a member of community then?
You're a member of community.
You're a transportation funder and an MPO.
She's a member, a voting member of the.
Depends on what you call this.
But on MPO issues, right?
But she's not subject to the, to the, to the penalty, I mean.
I didn't know that, is that in our charter?
It won't put us.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look at that.
The only thing I officially can't vote on is your town plan, town plans, yep.
I just wanted to point out that I think that within A and R, there's, and even with the presentation from Chris, the amount of technology and data that's been coming in to help assess and do this type of work for clean water is just kind of increasing exponentially of what the staff at A and R is doing and their capacity. And their reluctance to do this is that they, they made a quick assumption that they didn't really have the staff capacity to do all of this. But I'm not sure that they, they really did a full assessment of how, how internally within A and R they could restructure things to more effectively address this, aside from where the money's coming from. So I have a kind of confidence that if we push it back to A and R and say, what, keep doing what you've been doing and, and don't put the burden on, on, on RPCs and agents, that they will come up with a solution.
Well, I think, isn't it more, don't ask us to do something that's outside of our capability?
For us, yes, absolutely.
And it's not that, it's not that we wouldn't help in trying to find out a solution, it's just we don't feel in this environment and where our staff capacities are and where our mission is, that this is something is in line with what it is that we could or, you know, much less should accept. So I don't, I, I mean.
So just before I got myself.
Now, now what I don't wanna, but what I don't wanna have happen is, is then, then have the legislature turn around and change the mission of ACCD and put it as part of our ACCD grant every year. And that's the risk.
So just to, and, and push on me as, as, as you need to, but I've been saying, you know, we'd be happy to try to help get money and, you know, for projects to towns or whoever, conservation district, watershed group.
Because we do that.
Because we do that.
We do that.
Right, but, yeah, with this kind of enforcement and, you know, unrealistic expectations about us taking on maintenance that were issues.
We're a municipal service organization, and then we're gonna be enforcing against any, any municipal grant that's done, much less the private sector.
Well, I will say that Mike O'Brien was a bit attracted to the concept that we might get badges and sidearms.
Be nice.
That was true.
Be nice to his incoming highness.
Actually, in fairness, I'm like, I think I may have brought that up. This'll get easier when we get guns and badges.
I don't understand why even a watershed district would want the responsibility, being a clean water provider, if they're, you know, penalized, then they.
Actually, actually, I prefer can't accept the responsibility to not want to.
Right. The rub becomes somebody has to do it.
Right. But who would?
Well, you could, you could make an arm of A and R, you could create a board at the state level where the cases get brought. Because you're gonna need due process, you're gonna need lawyers, you're gonna, I mean, it's not just finding somebody that they're in compliant and, and you slap them with a fine. There's the whole due process on how you fight that back if you don't believe you're, you should be penalized that way.
What's that?
It'd be under appeal for years. There are mechanisms to do it, but they'd have to create it, either within A and R or a state board or something.
They can't, they can't ask us to beat the crap out of our constituent membership organization, our members of our own organization. We serve them, we're gonna enforce it.
Ask John about, how about the T board?
There's always discussions that can be had.
Well, he is a power-grabbing maniac, but I don't know if he even wants this.
But I'm just saying, it's, you know, it's just way more complicated. We don't, not only is it our mission, we don't even have an arm of our mission that even gets into anything like it.
Yeah.
It would be a radical departure from what we do.
Good, thank you very much.
So we need to find a workable solution for this because we have to do these projects. We just have to find the right way to do it and the right organizational and oversight slash enforcement resources that are needed to do the job.
And there's an appropriate facilitative.
Legislature, not us, not us.
No, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not saying we, the RPC, I'm saying the state. Just like we're in favor of renewable energy, okay? We are in favor of clean water, and last time I checked, okay? So we are, we are proposing to be constructive in this, within the bounds of reason. And asking us to be enforcers or even overseers of private entities that do that is utterly inconsistent with our staff resources and our mission.
And then to add on to that, and then the potential to be held liable if we're not successful in our enforcement activities.
I, I understand that nobody wants to have this responsibility, but somebody has to have that responsibility. If this is the way we elect to do it in this way in the state, if we elect to farm it out and then have an enforcement function for people to do these things right, which if we're giving out money from the taxpayers, we ought to, even if it's bond money, okay, the taxpayers are still gonna pay that back over twenty years with interest, okay? We owe it to ourselves to do this correctly, and we, as an RPC, should position ourselves to be in a positive contributor, but not in a way which violates our capabilities or our mission. And maybe violates is the wrong one, it's inconsistent with our mission, capabilities, and resources.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item, executive director report.
Legislative update, so there's this bill, S ninety-six. Sorry. The other.
You're Mark Medien, aren't you?
The other thing that is not happening, as Jeff referenced earlier, is the Act two fifty bill. I probably gave you a little bit of an update last month. It seems getting clearer by the day that probably the House Natural Resources Committee is probably going to hold that bill through the summer.
It's not even a bill yet.
Yeah, presuming it comes, it becomes a, a bill at some point. But the draft bill, they are still making, talking about changes to that draft bill. And so they're gonna hold on to it. So on the good news front, that will probably leave some time for people to work on some specific provisions. In particular, I think, of importance to us is figuring out how the enhanced designation, existing settlements, whatever it is, whatever, however that works to promote smart growth development in our region is gonna be a real important provision. So I will leave it at that and just, you know, that's the heads up. There's a lot of other things going on in the legislature, but those are the two big things I've been tracking. I don't know if there are any questions on that.
Anything else to report?
No, not at this time, but thank you, Amy, for taking minutes.
All right, next on the agenda, we have a variety of committee and liaison activities and reports. Are there any members' items or other business that you wish to raise at this time? Yes?
I happened to hear on the radio today about Vermont perhaps being a state where driverless cars might be tested.
Yes, I heard that, too.
Yeah, and VLCT weighed in that municipalities ought to, and I was kind of mulling over in my head. I'm not sure where that sits, but I wondered why we wouldn't, as the RPC, MPO, want to at least talk about it? Whether we would have an opinion on this or whether it's just gonna go ahead. You know, I can think of pros and cons to it, but it, it just seemed like it, that they're, you know.
Would you like someone to come and do a presentation to you?
Sure.
I, I.
That'd be great.
Because you'll recall the last iteration of the Ecos Plan, we did include language in there anticipating driverless vehicles. And the challenge from a planning perspective at the time, you know, is what, a year ago, but that's, that's an eon in, in technological terms. There still wasn't enough data to really know how to deal with it in a planning way. But certainly, as part of the process to educate ourselves about what the implications are, positive and negative, that allows us to develop a base of knowledge that will then in turn inform our planning processes as we go forward. I think it's important, because any, any testing of that is more likely than not gonna be focused in, in, in great part in Chittenden County, so I think we need to be ahead of the curve.
Yes and no. I understand that part of the reason they wanna do it here is that the technology is coming. The Vermont terrain actually has certain challenges. If you're not in on the grand scope of planning, you know, you're liable to have more problems when it actually starts than you want because you didn't have, you know, your, your foot in the door. There's also a comfort level, they've seen, at least their studies show, that the closer people get to them, the more comfortable with the technology they are. So if it's being worked in your backyard and people then are, get more familiar with it, familiarity breeds some kind of acceptance. You get a lot of people now that'll tell you, no way, no how, never, and they actually do start to change their minds a bit once they're educated and.
I'd like to see how they're gonna interact at a certain interchange in Colchester and Williston and how they perform in rotaries with pedestrians and bicycles.
Roundabouts.
Love to see that.
They can probably do that elsewhere, I think the challenge. The challenge may be the winter conditions and actually our rural areas.
Dirt roads, too, since that day.
That don't have lines?
Yeah, that don't have lines, yeah.
Well, they use rocks that are aligned.
Do you wanna take Amy up on her offer to have Joe Segali come in and talk to us? And the other thing I'm gonna offer, and I will try to follow up.
I'm gonna come in with Michelle.
If we include this in the minutes, is that I believe in our Ecos Plan, well, we did talk about this a year and a half, two years ago, I think we did have some language about encouraging testing it in Vermont. So I think, and I gotta double check that, because that's been in the back of my mind and part of why I didn't think we had a policy.
I don't think the sentiment was very positive two years ago, if I'm remembering correctly, I think we were like what John was saying.
I think we had anxiety about it, but wanted to make sure it was tested before it's, you know, goes fully adopted, which.
And have all its accidents before it gets here.
Well, because aside from how it works, the impact, would that mean there's actually more vehicles on the road than left?
Oh, because they're only that far apart at fifty-five miles an hour.
And, you know, it drops you off and then has to go some other place.
Deadheading.
Oh, deadheading.
Yeah, drop you off at work and then go back home, so we have twice as much trouble.
I think it would be important, if we're gonna bring Joe in, Joe's very knowledgeable on this, is to let him know what we want. I mean, he's got a whole presentation on how it all works, where it's going, what the future looks like it is, you know, as of today. And then that's kind of separate than the effort to get the testing here in Vermont. So if we're gonna invite Joe in, I think it's a great idea, we need to give him some guidance on what it is that we actually want him to talk about because it's, it's a much bigger topic than he could ever fill time with that we'd be able to give him. So what is it that you wanna actually hear?
Why shouldn't we?
You wanna hear about the testing?
Yeah, I was feeling like we, you know, my first reaction was, why, of course we would want them to test it here, why wouldn't we? But if you're against them, then it proves that they're really. But if you're against them, then, and it proves that they're really great, then you've lost your chance to say no. That's the cynicism.
And there is a, there is a debate, you started off with the VLCT position.
Yeah, yeah.
There is a debate about whether towns should have to opt in to being, allowing testing within their municipality, or should the statutory language be that a town has to opt out of being a testing location? So, that's, that's, that's a debate that's going in the legislature, by the time of your next board meeting, that debate is probably gonna be over, but we'll at least know which way it landed.
Wouldn't that be a kick if it couldn't operate on class four roads?
That was a reasonable why, why, as a, as a RPC that deals with transportation and our municipalities, that it would be, we would have been a good place to at least have that discussion, as opposed to VLCT weighing in for all the towns, when, you know, we're so much more intimately connected with transportation in Chittenden County.
Same thing with commuter rail.
So, on, along those lines, if you, and I'm unclear on this as a transportation body primarily, but with the two items that occurred to me in the last week or so, where fossil fuel infrastructure, I think, is getting debated at the State House, we don't have to weigh in on that, do we? Very first one, and in today's seven days, there was a nice big article, it's not article, ad, from an organization in Putney that's against 5G because of radiation concerns. Are those things that we would get involved in as well, when you talk about conversion? So, you know, more of the utility type, probably under the public utilities, more than our bailiwick, but I'd like to know, we just, we, we aren't as anchored in it as with transportation, I think is what I'm asking. And, you know, should we inform ourselves, will we ever have an opportunity to weigh in on either of those two topics? And I don't know enough about 5G to know one way or the other if it's a noise or, or what.
Our plan has broad policy statements.
Well, yes.
I actually know a little bit about that, and it has to do with weather forecasting, because whenever you see Doppler radar, that, that's very close to that frequency of 5G, and they're concerned that this could cause as much as 18% inaccuracies in weather forecasts, which, yeah, who cares with a big rain shower, but when you're talking about Hurricane Sandy, it could be a big difference. Our, our Ecos Plan has some broad policies related to those two topics, you know, I don't...
We haven't drilled down, is what we're hearing, but we'll be updating the Ecos Plan, and we have the opportunity to drill down if we...
The president says we're going to 10G, so...
And meanwhile, the Ecos Plan must make us reinforce the MDS and why we worry about...
Don't have that stuff in ballin'.
I mean, at this point, I, I look at it from the perspective that we're the regional planning commission, so the issues that we weigh in on need to be, or ought to be related to planning for the region with respect to that. So, you know, as these issues come up, I think, I mean, that's the filter through which I look at it, but certainly, if, if, if folks feel that there are issues that bear on planning, that are more immediate, such as those sorts of things, I think it's appropriate, and it's within the scope of what we do in our Ecos planning process.
We can't plan if we don't know, we don't have any information.
And when we start putting the committees together to, I mean, when does that start for the next, though, it's a length, it's a lengthier period of time now.
Oh, for the next Ecos Plan update? Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, I've been interpreting the conversation as like, what do we want to get involved in at the legislature, based on what we have in our plan, and which would require probably, in some of these cases, digging in deeper than our plan goes.
Well, I think it's recognizing things that we may not recognize now, that might have a bearing on what our charges. I think that's more than, more than getting ready to participate in the ballgame under the Gold Dome. I think we just gotta know whether or not driverless cars, the evolving wireless technology, and among other things are gonna be...
The infrastructure for fossil fuels, I mean, you know, we have a certain pipeline for...
Oh, the proposed ban on...
Yes, and, you know, if you're gonna suddenly have a legislature that says...
But we already have it, so...
Well, you got yours, but I don't know, does Westford have theirs? And there implies the run.
Right. So, all those things, I think, are reasonable things for us to look at.
Well, and, you know, the infrastructure, the pipelines, part of energy, as well as driverless cars, because...
Oh, and it goes to economic development and all those other things that we address as well.
You know, you talk about the deadheading, but an idea for wireless, for the driverless cars, is that they could be, you know, very busy, and you drop people off and stuff, so that you're actually saving energy under those conditions.
Shared service. So...
Real butt cars.
Exactly.
But I, I, I don't know, maybe I shouldn't belabor this, but I think this, to my sense of where I spend my time, it's, it's worth it if it seems like there is something that is gonna move through the legislature, that's going to impact policy and our future, and that actually has a chance to move. So, I don't know, I've, I've been trying to follow, you know, the two major things that I thought were gonna move this year or next year, but these other things...
I think they're short term and long term issues.
Yeah.
They're short term and long term, and legislature's more short term, in my view, anyway, I don't know, I mean, they're a long term legislature.
That gets into the idea of, are we gonna try to get in a position of driving some legislation, you know, if we're trying to affect policy change at the state level, which is really hard, you know, in a whole different level.
Especially from Chittenden County.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, thanks for your comments. But that wasn't directed at Jeff, that was directed at Chittenden County broadly, and the reaction of the legislature. But, yeah, so, you know, I guess partly, if you all, if, or any one of you felt like something was really moving that was gonna have a, an impact on us, like, definitely bring that up.
I get the sense that it is, but I just wondered, you know, if we had the wherewithal to begin to take straw polls, map out where we perceive that, you know, the development's gonna be, that it's going to get served efficiently and, and within the realm of the next 20, 25 years, you know, rather than counting on pie in the sky things, because there's no doubt we want core development, and we've always spoken to that, and some of the limitations that may be thrust upon you may be countered to that. And then, at the same time, you know, I, I'm not sure whether 5G is anything to worry about, or anything that gets thrown into the mix, it's, it's something I just don't have any knowledge about.
Chris, in the context of our work plan, okay, we do a financial plan out to 20, 40, whatever. Don't you think driverless cars is gonna be an issue at some point in time?
That's why you're putting it out.
In that time horizon, so that's part of our normal work plan.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I absolutely agree about the fossil fuel.
5G or 6G might be, or maybe 10G, you don't know, the president has a unique characteristic of, you know, making stuff happen, even by accident, so, I mean, we just need to, I mean, that's not outside of our time window to look at those kinds of things, and things like fossil fuel, infrastructure, prohibitions, you know, are a lot more impactful than fracking bans in Vermont, so, I mean, those are...
There are a lot of things that get brought up, I mean, the whole, you know, the whole climate initiative that was, you know, that could be very impactful, but at least my sense at the moment is, it's not, it's not moving through the legislature, so...
I mean, we need to develop some kind of approach for keeping our eye on things that are potentially, well, I mean, driverless cars are potentially game changers, from the standpoint of all the work we're doing on interstate capacity. I mean, we're doing a long-term assessment right now of our interstate system, okay? And the county had a very congested travel corridor, all, you know, we have to be wary of making or recommending large investments where something, some disruptive technology comes in, and all of a sudden, we've sunk a 40-year investment in that has a lifespan of half the amount of time that we thought it was going to, and we, as an organization, have a responsibility to our constituent communities and the people in those communities to not do that.
You could say the same thing about the energy, the, the solar panels, I mean, you go back to anything, Jeff, you look back 25, 30 years ago, and the, the dish, dishes that people were getting internet or TV signals from were the size of that screen or bigger, and now you've got a little tiny dish that's a little bigger than these plates, you know, and you're, you're doing things, so that's, that's gonna happen no matter what, in many ways, we can look at it, I mean, I, I think you could say that about many, many things.
I'm, I'm more concerned about transportation investments as a transportation planning body, and the things that could come in to disrupt those, because those are big ticket items, we are talking about...
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna to, 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 you know, put so much value or credence on that belief that this is gonna happen, I, I, I hear you, that, that driverless vehicles are probably gonna happen sometime in the future, when, who knows, but we know right now, we have a problem with traffic in this, in this county. We need to address it, we didn't get the Circ Highway, we've got circ alternatives that are stagnant right now in many, many of our municipalities, I wanna see that stuff move forward. I, I'm, I'm keeping my eye down the road, but I'm, I'm living in today and addressing today's problems without trying to, to, you know...
My point is, we have fiduciary obligation to the communities that we serve, to do our best to anticipate disruptions going forward. I'm not talking about not funding circ alternatives, I'm not talking about saying that we shouldn't do studies on interstate capacity to alleviate, you know, congestion, I'm just saying that when we do that long-term assessment, we have to recognize there could be some disruptive technologies that might affect our investment decisions within the timeline of that study, and we have to do the best that we can, however imperfectly, to anticipate that, even if we make a mistake, even if we make a mistake that's two or three X. We will be better off, when we get 30 years down the road, having tried to think about that than putting our, our, our heads figuratively, I'm not saying that's what we're saying, in the sand and not looking for those things. Those are, you know, those can result in unrecognized financial obligations, not necessarily from the standpoint in new investments that we would have to make, but investments that we make in the wrong area that have a 40-year lifespan that may run out in 15 years.
Well, I think, I mean, and the role, and I know Andy has, has brought this up with the executive committee too, is, at times, we become creatures of, what's the next deadline, what's the next thing we have to generate, and we're very reactionary, and then, at times, we try to be more forward-looking, be, you know, a force behind policy change, as opposed to just a reactionary board, and there's always a bit of a tension there, because on one hand, we have to do the things that are in our normal cycle, things we do, but we don't wanna lose sight, we don't wanna just become, you know, mechanics, we wanna, we wanna think more broadly. So, I, if there's time on next month's agenda, I think it would be appropriate for us to have a discussion about not only how the commission ought to balance those two things, but also in recognition of what our planning mission is, the reality that we meet once a month, how and what sorts of things ought we to be weighing in on, and what's the best way to do that, and that's, you know, that's something I'd ask everybody to sort of, you know, put their thinking cap on about, and I think we could have a really good discussion about, about that.
We're planners, we're supposed to at least try to be proactive, okay?
Yep. Can I go back to my initial thing on this about whether we could have a straw poll, about whether people think that we would want to support Vermont being a place where driverless cars were tested?
Just interesting. Can you wait until after Joe's presentation? Because actually, one of the parts of the presentation is, is giving, it's a lot more complex. Autonomous vehicles isn't one thing.
Yep.
It's the technology and the application of the technology, so I think you might benefit from the overview part.
Okay, I mean, I, I just...
I'd have to say I don't know, right now.
Before you...
But, yeah, but, I mean, I guess it's, it's just the concept of whether we're open to people coming, you know, to, to at least someone testing the, I, I'm perfectly willing to wait, I just was curious about...
That's just a suggestion.
I think that's really important.
The technology, understanding the technology is a lot of understanding what the, what the bill is addressing.
I don't sense anybody being opposed, regardless of what information is provided to us on the topic.
Well, it's like John said earlier, John said the whole thing of familiarity brings, brings acceptance. Familiarity, what, what, what Amy's talking about, getting Joe in here to explain it so we all have a better understanding, maybe we all, I'd rather do that than try and draw a conclusion based on a straw poll to satisfy what you're just curious, than to get us educated so that we can, we can do the straw poll with, with some education.
We're gonna do a straw poll, we're just talking about the timing.
We are all curious, we're all curious and I want to learn more. Anything further? Yes?
I have an announcement that's actually related to what we've been talking about. We, the university, along with CCRPC and some other partners, are hosting a forum on May 3rd. That is, the theme is using multimodal transportation to meet parking and TDM, transportation demand management challenges on campuses and in communities. It's a pretty broad theme, but the three sort of major session areas are autonomous vehicles and electric vehicles is one, what Vermont's doing to lead the way with transportation innovation, and then the third one is micro-mobility and micro-transit, and how that's used in a rural state. So, it's a regional conference, we're pulling from the Association of Commuter Transportation Members, and then New England Parking Council members, but it's open to any and everybody that's interested. So, it's May 3rd from 9:30 to 3:30, you can come on the UVM website, which is just uvm.edu backslash transportation to see the full agenda, but we would definitely encourage anybody that's interested in these topics to come and be a part of the forum and the conversation.
Excellent, very timely. Anyone else got any conferences that would address any of this?
I'm gonna move the adjourn before we get too deep, much deeper.
Okay, we have a motion adjourned, is there a second? Got a second from him, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you very much, folks.